All right, I'll call the June first two thousand twenty or remote meeting for West Richardson City Council order at six. Yeah. And then before we asked Stephanie to call the role, I'll ask her to read our virtual meeting ground rules and then call that role.
Thank you. Please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you've joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video. And there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant ID. Please call in with that ID as then your phone is associated with your video. We will mute everyone until a designated comment period. When the mayor asks for public comments, if you raise your virtual hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. All right, roll call, Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
Gail Brown.
Here.
Rich Buell.
Here.
David Fettow.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Unmuted and present. All right, very. All right, so I'll give Stephanie just a second to go ahead and mute everybody and I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, council, the agenda is before you this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Motion carry. Thank you, council. We do not have any presentations this evening. That brings us to the consent agenda. Which includes the approved minutes of the regular meeting, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Resolution twenty-two-one authorizing the mayor to execute agreement with Alexander for Paradise Way Phase Four. Resolution twenty-one twenty-one authorizing adoption of proclamation proclaiming June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one is Juneteenth Day. Resolution twenty-two twenty-one authorizing the mayor to execute dispersment agreement for the use of rural county capital funds with Benton County. Resolution twenty-three twenty-one amending the two thousand twenty-one twenty-two salary schedule. Motion to approve the end governmental agreement COVID nineteen response messaging. And a motion to approve the third restated interlocal cooperation agreement between Benton Franklin County Agencies for Police Information Network, known as BI-PEN. If there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak to our consent agenda this evening, you'd raise your virtual hand. Or star nine on your phone, the clerk will recognize you for your comments. Stephanie, do you see anyone this evening?
I do not see anyone.
Nor do I. Okay, council, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, please. Motion carry. Thank you, council. And this is the first time that we'll have opportunity for citizen public comment this evening. If you would wish to provide comment to council, if you please raise your virtual hand or star nine on your phone. Clerk will unmute you and you could address council. And I see no takers at our first two public comment sessions. Do you, Stephanie, see anyone?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised, no.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. Item A is a public hearing regarding our cybersecurity audit that was conducted by the State of Washington's office. We have representatives from the audit team here to present their report this evening. And after that, we will go ahead and open a public hearing. So I will go ahead and introduce, let's see, we've got Michael. And we also have, matter of fact, Erin, I'll let you go ahead and kick off this, this, this is your team here. So Erin, Gwen will introduce our our audit staff.
So it was actually Stephanie and I have been working with Michael, sorry if I butcher your last name. Hermitstead and then Leah, where's Leah? Leah Glasner was also, they were part of the extensive audit team we had. And they're here to give us a report, so I'll turn it over to Michael.
All right, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, sir, we have you.
All right, great. So yeah, hello, my name is Mike Trumpson, the office of the Washington State Auditor. As mentioned, Leah Glazer is with me here today. She led the audit that we perform. And we also have Scott Frank who manages our overall IT audit team here, director of our IT team, actually. I'd like to just thank the council for the opportunity to address you today. And I am pleased to present the results of our audit title opportunities to improve the city of West Richland's information security. Our office is highly aware of the importance of IT security. There are many professional publications, stories, federal, state, local audits, all describing the challenges and risks that are being experienced in the IT environment by local governments. As a result, a few years ago, our office began developing a team of auditing and technical experts to allow us to offer local governments the opportunity to participate in performance audits. And those audits being focused on IT security. The city of West Richland volunteered to participate a few years ago and we began our audit with you guys back in September of two thousand twenty. For this audit, we looked at IT security from two perspectives for the city. We looked for specific vulnerabilities that may exist in the IT environment that can lead to increased risk. For this, we brought in, we had our internal team of IT security professionals perform some technical tests to identify vulnerabilities, analyze the results in detail, prioritize them and you know, give those results back, all focus on how attacks are actually happening these days in the real world. For the second part, we looked at the city's policies, procedures and standards and compared them to leading practices that are designed to help ensure good securities implemented consistently. To do this, our team selected the Center for Internet Securities CIS controls as our primary source for leading practices. There are some challenging practices, very hard to align with. But very valuable if you do get fully aligned with them. And so we did an evaluation of the city based on that. We did that by conducting interviews, gathering evidence from like various paper records and other information and doing technical tests. So before I go over the results, I would like to mention this audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted government audit standards. And it was performed under the two thousand five Initiative nine hundred, which supported the funding of the audit. So there was no cost to the city for this other than your time and effort. So one of the, I also mentioned that however, because of the use of initial nine hundred funds, we do have one requirement, which is to have this public hearing after we issued our report, which was done a couple of weeks ago. So that's what we're doing here today. I'll also mention the security assessment will always identify issues. It's just the nature of things. Perfect security is functionally impossible. It's a very complex topic and it's constantly changing. So you can be secure one day and then new vulnerability is identified and a new threat comes out and you're at risk again. So there's always going to be some concerns when you look at security. Our audit found overall, however, that this city's policies and procedures partially aligned to the practices we tested against. And we did also identify some technical security issues during the audit. We are not discussing those in further detail in this public session because we do not want to put the city's security at risk. I will say though, the city's IT leadership were very proactive in their attitude towards addressing these. And were very helpful throughout the course of the audit. As noted in the second paragraph for the audit results section, you know, this is all very high level and the reason, the basis for not also going into detail is what's called RCW forty-two fifty-six four twenty, section four, which exempts the details of security assessments from public disclosure. So that is back under the legal basis for us not disclosing that. And finally, we'd just like to recommend the city continue its efforts to remediate the issues and risks we identified during the audit and continue to use available best practices to work on developing policy standards and procedures that will help the city to ensure they maintain a strong security posture. And I would just like to close out by recognizing the city's leadership and being a participant in these audits. And the great willingness of the city staff to support the audit, particularly Stephanie Hagg and Erin Quinn, who were extremely helpful throughout the course of this audit. And helped us get this one done in one of our quicker ones ever, actually, and all during COVID as well. So very helpful and very responsive and greatly appreciated. Any questions?
Thank you, Michael. And without getting into the weeds, council, if you have any questions of the audit team, I will remind you at a later date, next council meeting, we will have an executive session to get a little further involved in the conversation of what the audit consists of. Not disclosing it today in the public setting. So with that, anybody question the audit team or Erin and Stephanie? Okay. Very good. I don't see anybody. Erin, do you have anything else you'd like to add or Stephanie?
No. Just thank you to the team. I know that it has actually started before me. So Jessica Platt had this on the agenda for three years before they got to us. So this was kind of continuing on. I have asked them to put us on the the agenda again because it is another three to four year wait to see how we're doing. Based on what recommendations they've given us and then we're able to kind of measure the progress we're making.
Thank you, Erin. And to comply with the auditor's office requirements for the RCW, I will open this public hearing up at six thirteen. If you'd like to provide comments, please raise your virtual hand or star nine on the phone. And Stephanie will recognize you and unmute you. Stephanie, do you see anyone from the public?
I do not see anyone.
Okay. With that, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing at six thirteen. You are now compliant, Michael. You're off the hook there. Perfect. Want to thank Scott, Michael and Leah for joining us this evening. It was a great conversation we had the other day. I thank you for everything that you've done and you, with your input and your, your resources, I can honestly say that you're gonna, you're gonna make us a safer and more secure city as we move forward. So thank you again and have a great evening. Okay. Okay, with that, we will go ahead and be moving on to item eight B, which is a public hearing on the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-seven six-year transportation improvement program. With that, I'll ask Roscoe Slade to present his staff report this evening. Roscoe?
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight is our annual public hearing on our six-year transportation improvement program. We do this on an annual basis. We go through a process to take public input. This then goes through a regional council of government where there's a second opportunity for the public to comment on it before it's submitted off to DOT. When we look at how we prioritize projects, we look at project funding as far as it being secured or unsecured, safety, mobility, preservation and economic development. You can look in the staff report that kind of outlines the things that we look for. Some of the changes, this is really what I'll focus on. I included last year's six-year tip. So this is the twenty-two through twenty-two seventy. Changes, we added King Road Pathway Phase Five. It's included in the Keen Road Widening Project, but we listed as a separate project because there are funding opportunities for pathway that are separate. So by doing that, it helps us be able to go after funding for that pathway. Added Collins Road Payment Preservation Project. Several projects were modified now that the SR two-two-four Red Mountain Transportation Improvement Project was listed on the transportation budget. It's gonna deal with five intersections. And so rather list all those separately, combined it into one project. So there was basically five intersections and the road project has now been combined into a single project. Paradise, or excuse me, Keen Road Widening Project was split into two phases. We basically broke it up at Belmont. It was just too large of a project to fit into typical funding opportunities. So that was broken in into two. And then the pavement preservation projects were only showing overlay and mill and fill projects, which are considered structural. The other ones are maintenance and so we removed that off our tip. Those are still in our pavement preservation project. But a lot of those maintenance ones aren't eligible for TIB funding. So we took them off. Alls it does is it seemed to clutter the map. Some of the projects were shortened because portions were constructed by developers. So South Thirty-Eighth Phase Two, Paradise Way Phase Six. And then a number of projects were removed. So our Signal Project at Thirty-Eighth and Van Geesten, because that'll be under construction here in August. Paradise Way Phase Four, we're going to construct that later this year. Already talked about pavement preservation and removing the maintenance items. And then there's Keen Road Phase Six B, Belmont Boulevard Phase Two and Three, because those will be constructed by developers. So they were removed off the six-year tip. So no action tonight. We're just here to get public comment on our proposed twenty-two twenty-two seven six-year transportation improvement projects.
Thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate it. With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing at six seventeen. If you would like to provide comments, go ahead and please raise your hand or star nine on your phone. And we'll have Stephanie recognize you, make comment on a six-year transportation improvement program. Stephanie, I do not see anybody from the public, do you?
I do not see anybody.
Very good. I will close the public hearing at six eighteen. And again, this is no action item this evening. A resolution will be presented to council at our next regular meeting. Thank you, Roscoe. Moving on to eight C, it's a motion to approve a long-term care insurance group policy. And with that, Selena, thank you for joining us this evening. I know.
Mayor, I want to jump in real quick. I'm sorry. I want to know if the council had any comments on the six-year tip.
Yeah. Can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Thank you. Hey, Roscoe, so I just have a question. I was hoping you could elaborate a little more on the Fallon Drive work. What was, maybe you said it and I missed it. What was, what does that entail?
Which, which project? I'm sorry, John.
Number six.
Fallon Drive.
Fallon Drive. Is that like a resurfacing or what was that? Sorry, I don't mean to stump you. If it's not.
No.
I can wait until.
Oh, it's, it's basically a reconstruct. So that's going from Van Geesten Thirty-Eighth all the way around. It's, it's a reconstruct building out.
Would that be including like gutters?
Yeah, yeah, it would be, I'd say wider than our typical local roadway. It probably, instead of being thirty-six, it'd probably be a little bit wider to allow roadside parking, curb gutter, storm drainage, sidewalks and street lights. So it'd be a complete street.
Wow, okay.
So it's, it's, it's quite large.
Yeah, that is, that would be, I know that we've had some discussion about parts of that with some of the mini storages down there. Is that the same road I'm thinking of?
That's the same road. Currently, the only piece that's been improved was in front of the golf course, the frontage of West Richmond Golf Course.
Right, right. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I drove on that twice this weekend and was kind of noting all the various degrees of finish and not finish.
Yeah, it's, it's in rough shape and that's why staff recommended moving it up. If you look at the previous year, I think it was twenty-nine. And so, you know, removing some of the payment preservations and some of the other projects we completed, we moved that up to a higher ranking.
I think it makes a lot of sense. What I did notice is that there was a, we've also talked in the past about trying to connect the West Richland Gateway part to some sort of path that would sort of take that route. Is that, is there any possibility of getting something like that included in the transportation improvement program or is that something that has to come separate?
It, it's included in, so that project number six doesn't, doesn't include the pathway on the north side of Fallon, taking it over to the signal at Van Geesten and Bonner Range and over to Flat Top Park. How it gets from Flat Top Park up to where it ends up in section six there, that'll be part of the park plan, that, that connection. But making that connection, that pathway is, is part of project six there with Fallon.
That sounds great. So I would, I would love to have input on how to make that connection, that's section six. So looking forward to that communication and and maybe a workshop or a discussion with the park board or something to get this all integrated and finished up so that it looks like a complete pathway. So yeah, appreciate that. That all sounds great. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
I thought when we talked about this before, Roscoe, that one corner coming right out that section right as you're coming off the existing path. Because it just has a ledge that we would have to do considerable something to hold that up. I mean, there's nothing there. You're either in the road or you're down at the riverbank.
You're, you're, you're exactly right, Gail. So I've, I've got a lot of feedback. Is, you guys getting feedback? Let's be on my end. So yeah, Gail, the, that section through there, we've already looked at it as some preliminary design. So to take that pathway along that edge is going to take some retaining walls to get, put that pathway in that section because it does, it just drops off the edge down to the, to the river. So that's factored in and that's why that project's, I think, I think it's five point two million dollars for that section of road. It's pretty extensive.
And we don't have anything going the other way on that. Because I thought it was that, that was Corps of Engineers, but apparently it's not.
Yeah, the, yeah, where it ends on the south side of Van Geesten. That's the Dyking District.
Yeah.
And they fenced it off. They've indicated they didn't want a pathway on top of the dyke there. I'm not giving up on that, but that's, that's their stance currently.
Thank you. My apologies there. Anyone else? All right.
Sorry about that, Mayor, just.
No, that's fine. And you didn't, we didn't have any comments during the, from the time the packets went out this last week. So I thought we were clear. So we're good. With that, then moving on to eight D is motion authorized mayor, excuse, backup eight C. There we go. Motion to approve long-term care insurance group policy. And again, Selena, thank you for joining us this evening.
All right, of course. So let me share my screen here. I don't know if that's really coming up. It says, are you guys, there we go. Sorry.
Not yet. There we are.
Okay. All right, thank you for getting through my technical ineptitude there. So council, I am here to talk about a new payroll tax that will be taking effect January first. This is Washington State's Long Term Care Act. So just starting with the basics, what is the Long Term Care Act? This is very recent legislation that Governor Inslee just signed on April twenty-first. Long-term care is home health care, assisted living, nursing home care. It's the type of care that somebody needs when they, they need assistance with what are called activities of daily living. This is eating, bathing, dressing, these types of activities. Now currently, long-term care is not typically funded through traditional medical insurance or Medicare. It's typically funded through public dollars, the majority through Medicaid. Now Medicaid is heavily funded by the states. For instance, in twenty nineteen, Medicaid was funded sixty-four percent by the federal government and thirty-six percent by the states. So this long-term act, Care Act, is intended to cover the funding gap for long-term care services in the state of Washington. And what does it mean for employees? So, starting January first, W two employers are going to be required to withhold point five eight percent of their employees' gross wages. This will be all W two employees, so not ten ninety-nine employees and not self-employed people unless they choose to opt in. So W two employees who are eighteen and older and they work more than five hundred hours a year, which is just under ten hours a week. Unlike social security, there's no wage cap. So employees are going to be taxed without limitation on their salaries. It doesn't matter if they make twenty-five thousand a year or three hundred thousand a year. Now, most people, right now, this is going to be a one-time opportunity for employees to opt out. Right now, employees are only going to have until October thirtieth to opt out of this act. And in order to opt out, they're going to need to have long-term care, a rider on their life insurance policy or on their annuity, or they're going to have to have qualifying long-term care insurance. Now, very few people actually have long-term care insurance. Most people don't start looking for this until they're in their fifties or their sixties. So we probably have very, very few, maybe just one or two employees who qualify right now to opt out of this act. And finally, private actuaries are assessing this tax rate of point five eight percent as not being sustainable. So at this point, we are expecting that this is only a starting rate and that increases will be sure to come over the years. And once people are paying in, what sort of benefits can they expect to get of this act? So people can start applying for benefits January of two thousand twenty-five and you'll notice that's three years after they start paying into it. And also, everyone has the same lifetime benefit max. A lifetime benefit max on this is thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. And that's going to be regardless of what people contribute. Now, just for comparison sakes, just last year in central Washington, the average cost of assisted living care was sixty thousand dollars a year. And it was just over a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for nursing home assistance. Now, also, employees that contribute into the program, if they want to draw from these benefits later, they're going to have to reside in the state of Washington. And as many of you know, that's not a retirement plan for a lot of people. A lot of people plan on moving out of state. But Washington will have to be your primary residence to access these benefits later. And also, there is a fairly extensive vesting period, which will disqualify many employees. A person must pay into this program for a minimum of three of the last six years or five consecutive years out of the last ten prior to filing a claim. So what can we do for employees? Now, city of West Richland has been approved by Life Secure to offer group long-term care insurance. Life Secure is a stable, secure company. They're a subsidiary of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan founded in nineteen fifty-four. They have an A minus rating and they're a leading carrier of worksite long-term care insurance. But one of the reasons we're thrilled to offer this or potentially offer this to employees is they have very reasonable premiums with unisex rates. Typically, long-term care charges women more. So these unisex rates are very desirable to our employees. Life Secure has a very simplified underwriting process. It's a one-page health questionnaire where typical long-term care policies have a complex underwriting and it can seem very medically intrusive. And one of the best things about Life Secure is the policies are portable. So as long as the employees continue to pay the premium, this is something that they can take with them after they leave the city of West Richland. And as long as they're paying their premium, they will continue to be able to opt out of the act, the tax, as long as, you know, they carry their insurance. And we just talked about the lifetime benefit max under the Long Term Care Act, which is thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Life Secure has options and they start at fifty thousand and they go up to three hundred thousand for employees. And just for a simple cost benefit analysis, you can see on the Long Term Care Act, it doesn't matter how much you make, your tax rate is the same. And just for a simple cost-benefit analysis, you can see on the Long Term Care Act, it doesn't matter how much you make, your tax rate is the same. And it doesn't matter how much you contribute, your benefit level remains the same. Now, on the other side, you can see Life Secure and the premiums are based on age. And then the, the amount of benefit that the employee wants to purchase. And also, if somebody enrolls, let's say next week, somebody enrolls and they're forty-five years old. They're going to be paying at that um age forty-five premium rate unless they want to reapply for uh more benefits or something else. So Life Secure can only increase rates when they get approval from the Washington State Insurance Commissioner. Unlike the Long Term Care Act, they do not need that approval to increase rates. And just down to brass tacks, what is this going to cost the city of West Richland? So Life Secure does require companies that have fewer than a hundred employees to pay twenty-five dollars per month per policy. They will waive this once we have more than a hundred employees, so that's something that can be dropped off once we reach that threshold. We're currently estimating that about fifty of seventy employees will be approved. So working with that number, um, that would be a cost to the city of twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month or fifteen thousand dollars a year. But something else that happened recently is going to make this budget neutral. So PERS, the Public Employee Retirement System, the employer contribution on that is set to drop July first. It's going to reduce from twelve point nine seven percent to ten point two five percent. And that reduction is going to allow us to be able to pick up the cost of the long-term care, um, the twenty-five dollar part of the policy. Uh, without um changing the budget. And ultimately, why are we here today? Why is this important for employees? Um, a big driver of this moment is the fact that this is the only chance employees will ever be able to opt out of the Long Term Care Act. As long as they work in the state of Washington. They have until October thirtieth and after that, that's it. Um, and it's likely that many employees will never qualify for benefits from the act. Uh, they have many things like the vesting period and they have a requirement to live in Washington that's going to make it hard for some people. Where conversely, Life Secure is a real benefit that employees can keep even after their employment here. Um, now, the Long Term Care Act charges employees based on their wage. It's just their wage. Life Secure uh is looking at a person's age and the benefit level that they're choosing. Another benefit of this is typical long-term care insurance policies have a very stringent and complex underwriting system. Which would include many of our employees, but Life Secure has a simplified underwriting and a standard list of exclusions. And then, as we talked about before, um, the Long Term Care Act has a lifetime benefit max of thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Where a Life Secure, um, their minimum is fifty thousand dollars and employees can purchase more if they wish to. And in closing, does anybody have any questions?
Let's uh, let's go ahead and roll on into uh any audience comments if you'd like to uh. Raise question uh to this item on the agenda. If you raise your virtual hand or star nine, we'll uh. Have clerk on the issue, we recognize. I see no one, Stephanie.
I do not see anyone from the audience with their hand up.
So with that, I'd ask for a motion from council, please. If you want to continue discussion.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll, I'll read the motion. Um, I move to authorize the mayor to take all necessary steps to offer Life Secure Group Long Term Care Insurance Policy. To all current W two city employees who work five hundred plus hours cumulatively at any employer. And to authorize the city contributing twenty-five dollars towards each policy every month as long as. They, their policy is in effect. And the city and the employee works at the city of West Richland until such time as Life Secure no longer requires the city's contribution.
I second that.
Uh, motion in a second. I wanted to make sure Steph or Selena got everything in, in that, in that uh. Motion, so thank you, Mayor, for the ten break. So uh, I'll start from top uh left, going to the right. Now, go councilmember Smart, you're up, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Selena, I just had a question. It might not have to do with this particular motion, but I'm curious, uh, if you know. If somebody moves into the state of Washington. Or becomes a new employee, uh, I mean, do they, I think it, there's no option to opt out of this. It's like this is one time for everybody always.
At this point, this is a very solid deadline.
Yeah.
One and done, that's it.
All right. Just thank you for that. I appreciate the info. Thanks.
Councilmember Farrow.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Selena, is there an employer match for that fifty-eight cent taxation on employees in San Washington?
No, no, there's not. It is strictly employee at this point.
Okay. That all, Ms. Farrow?
Yep, that, that's all I need.
Councilmember Bloom.
Um, wow.
Yeah.
Um, what a bad deal. I, to, to reiterate, for being one of the older people on council. Um, the fact is that fifty thousand dollars of long-term care, when you need it. Will be pittance. Yeah, just, just to be aware. It, it, you know, inflation will eat you somewhere along the way. Um, and that's why most people don't look for long-term care until they're getting close to it. Uh, but um. I think this is an excellent opportunity to avoid a. A taxation that the state has put on us. And, but I, I would, I would suggest, I, I don't have, I, I didn't capture the, the table. But I would suggest that people also chop around as far as other options that, that might be available. More applicable to them because there are some good deals, um, well, some better deals, especially uh. Especially if you're older. Um, you know, because uh, a lot of that cost that you're. Collecting are really the administrative cost of the, of them keeping track of you forever. So um, uh, I applaud your efforts.
Uh. You, and if I could just say a few things in response to what you said, um, yes, inflation is a big deal. So if employees want to, uh, Life Secure offers some options where you can do three percent inflation or five percent inflation on your plan. So they built some options into that if employees would like to do that. And also, something I forgot to mention, um, I don't know who would be interested. But council uh does qualify to apply for this insurance as well because you are a W two employee. So it would, it would also include everyone that's on council.
But we don't, we don't do five hundred hours, uh officially five hundred hours.
Not here, but uh, I know that some people do elsewhere outside. It is a cumulative effect. So it's just something we can talk about if anybody was interested, um, if you're even interested, you know.
The other, the other, the other thing about long-term care that I would bring up is. It requires a certain number of, oh, your lights went out, you're in the dark.
There we go.
It requires a certain number of disabilities. I mean, you have to have, I believe, two uh issues. Uh, you know, inability to bathe or inability to walk or whatever it may be. So um. Uh. So, you know, it is insurance that you get that you don't think you'll ever have to use. Or able to qualify for. So uh, it's twofold. It's a, a double-edged sword. But I, I heard the other night that they expect that. Half the population born today will live to be over a hundred. In that. So um.
Become even more important.
Right, um. But. Uh, I'm at the two percent phase, the two percent of the people my age will die this year, so.
Well, hope it's not you.
Well, whatever. Anyway, but that's, that's what I bring forward. Um, you know, I've looked at long-term care and. You know, a better option is to try and self, self, uh, self-finance. As it's whatever, but uh, this is, this is definitely an opportunity to uh avoid a. An unnecessary state tax. So, thank you.
That, thank you. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you. And uh, Selena, you actually answered one of the questions I had because I noticed in there that it said. Anybody, any W two city employee who works five hundred plus hours cumulatively at any employer. So that definitely answers that question. I did want to mention that I have spoken with my money person about this change in taxes. And I am one of those veterans that when I get to an age where I require care. When I'm older, or even now, if I needed care for any of these things. Uh, the VA covers me, but VA is not one of those things that exempts you from paying into this tax in the state of Washington, from my understanding. Is that what you understand as well?
You know, I believe I would open that question up to Jamie Carlock. Um, she works for Conover, who is the agent that does this. Um, that is not a question I know I can answer definitively, but um, she may be able to.
Yeah, at this point in time, and hello, everyone, um, I've been here. Um, at this point in time, um, I don't think it's listed on the opt-out um schedule. I wouldn't be surprised that it may be added. Um, I know things are changing. Um, you know, over the next coming months, they don't even have a plan for how to opt out yet. Um, so things will be coming. Um, it might be worth investigating more, um, since you do have that option.
Okay, thank you very much. I just, I know that at the time, it didn't seem as if there was anything that. Uh, my person was able to find saying that VA coverage would allow for opt-out. But like you said, there's a lot of information we don't know about opting out. There's no way to opt out at this point. So I would love if and when you do get that information, Selena, if you could share it with us. I've asked him to do the same, but maybe you'll get that before he does.
Definitely.
But I appreciate the ability to give the employees of the city this chance to opt out if need be. Because it seems like this might be a better deal. Definitely than what the state's allowing. So thank you.
And I will definitely keep an eye out. I'm on a lot of different calls and everything regarding the state tax. So if I hear about it, I will definitely um let Selena know that something's changed.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Brown.
I, they've been talking about this for a long time. I, I didn't see this come across the legislature though, and. I'm not at all happy with this, and I think we should give the um employees a chance to not have to pay this. I mean, we're playing family act now and this, I mean, I, what, people don't even have to, they're just on everything. Um, but the agent in place, I'll go back to you, Roscoe, or Eric. Um, there's been a lot of documentation that these people will have to age in place, like Mr. Bloom said, regardless, because there's just not going to be the money. Um, so I think we really have to make sure that we're getting that planned into our parks and our pathways for these guys. Because they will be aging in place and social and physical activities are the only thing that's going to, you know, keep them from vegetating. So we really need to start planning for some of that.
Mayor Pro Tem, break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. Mathers, I know you are recommending Life Secure. As a, an alternative to the Long Care uh Act tax, excuse me, Long Care Act of the state. Can you tell me a little bit about what comparative analysis you did to uh, take Life Secure?
It was very, very simple because uh, there's really only two companies that offer group term life and care insurance. Um, so a lot of people can get their own individual policy, but it's the group policy that, that us as a city entity would offer. And so the options were Life Secure and Mutual of Omaha. Because we were obviously looking for something that would qualify for employees to opt out of the tax, uh, not just to have this benefit. Uh, Mutual of Omaha is a great company, uh, but their um premiums are a little more expensive. Um, it's very confusing to get through their information. Um, they have so many options. That it, it's a lot to wade through. So that, um, in conjunction with it being a little bit more, they do not have unisex rates. Um, women will pay more than men, and they have a, a complex underwriting. They don't have the simplified one-page underwriting. So just all of those things, um, given the fact that there were really only two options, it was clear that Life Secure was the better choice.
All right, thank you. And just one other follow-up question. Uh. There's a deadline for applying for this, um, obviously. What happens with new employees that come on after the deadlines pass? Will they be able to opt into it later on, say, a year or two from now if the city continues its coverage?
Well, they could purchase the insurance, but they cannot opt out of the tax.
Got it.
So I'm not sure if it would be worth it to them.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much for that information.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smart.
Uh, yes, I need one more follow-up question. So um. So this, this applies to each individual, uh, no matter how many places they work. So we work for the council, uh, for the city and we, uh, we get a stipend from them. I'm careful to say that we don't necessarily work for. But um, and then we, most of us have a job outside of this duty. Um, so if we were to opt into this through our council membership. That I presume, I'm asking sort of some personal advice here. I mean, does that, does that, does that, would that allow us to opt out of our W two obligations?
Yeah.
For this tax from our, from our, that, our day job?
Yes. If you qualify for this, you will get a certificate that says that you qualify to opt out. Um, well, I mean, I think I'm getting ahead of myself with what exactly you'll get, but the idea is that you'll have something you can keep. For the rest of your employed life that you can take to every employer that says that you get to opt out and you have this other coverage. So.
This tax applies to retirement benefits and things of that nature as well, I take it, or pension plans. So if we're getting paid a pension, we're still, we still have a.
Oh. If it's kind of like, guy, you're already retired and you're pulling from your pension, will they tax that? I don't know, but I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
Believe you have to, you have to be a W two, correct?
Yes.
You're not a W two employee with a pension.
Good point. Thank you.
Just the W two, it's just those of us receive, still receiving a W two who will be taxed, the point, what was it, point oh five, the point five?
Point five eight percent.
Point five eight percent. So after you retire, uh, presumably this doesn't apply any longer. The tax doesn't apply to you. All right, interesting. Good to know.
We do have a few people that will be retiring within the next two years, so presumably they're going to end up paying into this for two years. Retire and not need any qualifications to get the benefits. So, yes, we, that will be a problem.
Yeah.
Councilmember Moran.
Thank you. Uh, I was just wondering, I was going back and reading. So, when we're talking about uh, who work five hundred plus hours cumulatively. Uh, every month. So.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's five hundred a year. So it, it, um, it ends up being nine point six hours, um, you know, a week. So less than ten hours a week, uh, which just, I think, breaks it down into manageable numbers. Because we don't have anybody that works less than ten hours a week. That, that's not a West Richland employee.
Right. Well, I'm just curious, uh, for. What, how many hours is it considered that a council member would work per year then?
Um, I think that we have council members down for about seventy-eight hours a year.
Okay.
That's pretty close. It's probably not the exact number, but I can find out. But yes, you're, you're not anywhere near that just as a council member.
Right.
But I, I don't know what everybody does outside of this.
Right. I'm just trying to figure.
That just gives you, it gives you the opportunity as a council member, you're W two here, W two at your, at your employment. That gives you the opportunity to take advantage of it, not get hit with the point five eight. So, you know, it's a better bang for your buck there.
Well, and I would like to point out as well that um, that is what it is so that you have to pay the tax. You might be in a different situation later. So you can buy the insurance today, even if you don't necessarily, um, you're not obligated to pay the tax. If your situation changes in the future, you will have the insurance, so.
So, is it accurate then to say? Say that if currently, we meet the five hundred hours a year, a council member were to opt in. And then later, not have five hundred a year, that as long as we've opted out and. that as long as we've opted out and have this, then we wouldn't have to worry about paying that tax?
As long as you continue to pay your premium and you have that premium, that policy, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Bloom.
You have answered my question, but I'm not a W two employee of anywhere else. I'm a ten ninety-nine, self-employed. And so since I'm not a five hundred hour W two, I don't have to do this. But if I opted to do this, would, which, which would guarantee, heaven forbid, I have, have to become an employee again. Does that actually cost the city another twenty-five dollars a month?
Yes. We have to pay twenty-five dollars on every single person on every policy until that's waived. So, yes.
Per policy. Twenty-five dollars per policy.
Per month, okay. So what was the, what were the rates on the, on the independent insurance again? Were those like forty-five, eighty-nine? Is that what I remember?
Uh, let me pull up.
Those were per month as well, is that correct?
Yes, those premiums on the Life Secure, that was per month.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do you want me to send you that after this? I can send you. Okay, perfect, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Brink.
Yes, so the discussion has raised another question. It would seem to be in the interests of the city to try to enroll council members as well, seasonal employees as well, because then you will get above one hundred people covered by the policy. And therefore, the city won't have to pay the twenty-five dollars per month. Is that a correct assumption, Ms. Mathers?
Partially, yes. The idea is right. It's just that our seasonals are technically express employees. They're not on our payroll. They run through a temp company, so we can't include them.
So it's not a W two that the city issues, it's a third party, is that correct?
Right.
Right. But for your seven council members, that would add to the, the numbers that would be enrolled if we could, if we decided to.
Yes.
So brings me to the last question then. The way I read the motion was that current W two city employees who work five hundred plus hours cumulatively at any employer. Do we want to modify the motion to allow those council members who do not work five hundred hours cumulatively at an employer, such as Mr. Bloom and perhaps others, so that we can jump in on this and raise the numbers to try to more quickly end the city's twenty-five dollar a month surcharge?
Would that be something that we'd need to ask Jamie if, if that's a doable deal based on the, the regulations that have been set forth, Selena?
Yes, Jamie, are you, I saw her mute come off.
Yep, I'm here. So with the councilman, it would get up to over a hundred? Is that what we're?
No, put us at seventy-seven.
Yeah, we're still pretty far from that hundred mark. That twenty-five dollars could fall off if you guys get to that hundred. But until we're at that hundred, that twenty-five dollar per approved application per month is required.
But you would count them as staff, so instead of having seventy employees, we would then have seventy-seven employees?
Yes.
And the hours worked, Jamie, the hours worked, that would not be applicable to the council member?
Nope, because I mean, technically, we don't know necessarily where else they work or if they have other jobs. So as long as they're a W two employee of the city of West Richland, then they're good to apply for this policy.
Yes, because there's a separation here. So that the act, they're putting that five hundred hours in as part of a guideline for them. But Life Secure doesn't have that. If you're an employee, you can get the benefit.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, we've got a couple other hands up there, but Stephanie, would there be a necessity to change any motion if it is not applicable at the five hundred, based on what Jamie's comments were?
Yes, so I believe that if the, I believe the way the motion is, is read currently, that the only employees or individuals associated with the city that would be eligible to get the twenty-five dollar a month would have to work the five hundred hours cumulatively at any employer. So I do believe if we want to offer it to those that maybe are retired, then that would need to be amended.
Hey, could you make, could we make the, when we get to that, if Mayor Pro Tim Brink chooses to do so, could you just strike that five hundred requirement from the motion without having to make him read the whole thing again?
I, yeah, so he could, he could move to amend the motion to remove employee or who work five hundred plus hours cumulatively at any employer.
Okay, thank you for that. And Mayor Pro Tim Brink has made note made. We'll move on to Councilmember Brown.
And I'll maintain my second on it with that amendment as well.
We'll get, we'll get to that motion amendment in the second after the conversation.
Does this look like an increase as far as their, their benefits go? Because if we didn't try to offer this to him, and mind you, I think this tax is stupid, but we wouldn't actually be paying more. So they are gonna actually be getting more of a benefit. So this is kind of a race in everyone's thing. Not that it's a ton or anything, but it would, we're actually giving them all race.
But we will definitely promote this as a benefit. Yeah.
Well, it is.
It is, because otherwise, this would be a hundred percent employee responsibility, all to essentially a tax. And this is partially employer paid, and it is a true benefit.
Yeah, I just, this isn't something everybody can get, you know, and I just learned about this tax too, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'll go back to what, what Gail said earlier in regards to, she didn't see this coming through all the legislators, nor did I, nor did AWC. I actually stumbled on it when I was at a presentation at Franklin County Courthouse in regards.
I just heard about it. It was last week.
Yeah, I came back and says, hey, Stephanie, what's this deal here? Or excuse me, Selena, what's this? And boy, she, she jumped on it, got all the con over. This was a, this is the fire drill for sure, but fortunately, we were able to make it under the wire and give the option to.
I just think this is ridiculous.
Yeah, it was, it's pretty sad. Councilman Bloom?
I, I just want to follow up on the other aspect. Four of the faces you see on the, on the, of the four people that are up for reelection. I'm the only one likely to necessarily be here, since somebody's running against me. If a person leaves, yeah, and they, they would pay the, obviously, the city's not going to pass through the, the cost. They're, they're responsible for maintaining the insurance separately. Their headcount doesn't count. That removes the twenty-five dollar from the city, correct?
Yes.
And that headcount does not count towards your hundred, right?
Well, that's a good question. I would imagine no, because they're no longer an employee there. But Jamie, do you think that that would reduce the headcount then, because they're not an employer? Or does it stay the same, because you still have the premium?
I'd have, have to double check on how often you can reevaluate your employee count. But I would think it would just be like calculating it throughout the year. It would go down an employee. And if someone else came on and took over, it would go up an employee. And whenever we hit that hundred-person benchmark, then I can go to Life Secure and request that the twenty-five dollars be removed.
But, but the benefit, the benefit from having this goes away after October. So, and we may never get to the hundred employees. I mean, that's.
Well, it's quite a lot of employees, even if we include council, to go from seventy-seven to a hundred. We kind of grow two or three employees a year at the most, at the.
Right, but they, they won't be able to exempt, right? So motivation to, to buy into this is less because they're paying the tax. So it's a tax on top of tax. So the twenty, the hundred people, even if we had a hundred today, we might not have a hundred next year.
We might not.
Councilmember Smart.
Yeah, so just to follow up on that, first of all, so with that question, with the person that leaves, would they have to pay the monthly premium plus now twenty-five dollars because they're standing on their own with this insurance company?
Well, the rates that I'm going to send you, that's the full rate. Then the city picks up twenty-five dollars of that. So I would just simply term it as they will have to pay their full premium now.
Oh, I see. Oh, so, so the city has to pay twenty-five of the premiums that you showed, not addition to?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Well, that, that tempers my next question, which was with seventy-seven employees or seven, seventy, however many you have, times twenty-five dollars, times twelve months, that's like, you know, twenty-plus thousand dollars per year.
Yes.
What this, is what this motion is proposing essentially. And that's, that's probably a perpetual number. Because as Mr. Bloom just pointed out, it's unlikely we're gonna get more than a hundred employees to sign up for this tax or this insurance program, especially after the October date passes.
We were thinking the only time it might happen is there is, there's a, people are enraged about this. People are so angry. So I don't know if this is gonna come back and they'll open up some other opportunity for people to opt out. And then our employee count would be higher. Otherwise, the cost of the city should continue to decrease because right now, we're estimating about fifty of the seventy people get approved. So we're looking at about fifteen thousand dollars a year. And then as people leave the city, they'll drop off. So we think it's just going to re, continue to reduce.
So.
Lonely but surely.
Yeah, but now, so the, the, the rate, the rate tables. The other question was, what, what is the? So what we didn't know is like, what's the mean or average employee's salary? And what would their, you know, this point, point five eight percent of say, those forty employees salaries, what, what, what does that cost as a, as a lump sum? And then what we're saying here is that we're gonna pay as a city roughly twenty thousand or fifteen thousand of that. How does that compare with how they would pay, what rates they would pay if they bought the insurance? Did you do that comparison, like?
Yes. So let's say the average person makes about fifty thousand dollars. So that's two hundred and ninety dollars a year. And we're thinking that we have about fifty people, just to give some round numbers of things here. So that's fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. For a standard idea of fifty thousand dollars for every employee, we've got fifty employees. Obviously, we have some that are making thirty and some that are, you know, making ninety. And so that comes in right about the same rate of what the city's looking to pay. So out of those fifty employees making fifty thousand dollars, I have fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And we're thinking that this is gonna cost the city about fifteen thousand dollars a year. And the difference in that is a couple things. One, they're getting a real benefit. But two, we have some employees that make a little less. Let's say they're making around thirty thousand dollars a year. The tax to them may be less technically, but when the city takes the twenty-five dollars off the top of their premium, it ends up only being a couple dollars for them, much more manageable for them. Because we're talking about a group of people that really can't afford any more of these taxes. So now they have a benefit. It's only a couple dollars as opposed to paying a lot more than that and getting just a tax. So yes, the city is contributing, but this benefit means a lot more to some people, especially people that are paycheck to paycheck.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Selena. Great presentation. Mayor Pro Tim Brink, did you wish to amend your motion, sir?
I will amend my motion and strike the words "who work five hundred plus hours cumulatively at any employer."
Have a second, please?
I will second that.
Okay, very good. Motion to second, council. All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, council. A good conversation, great benefit for our employees that are being forced to another tax by our legislators.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And so we actually, so that motion to amend needed the vote and then. No, so, so the vote was to amend the motion, and then we need to vote on the motion as amended.
All righty, very good.
To comply with all of Robert's rules.
Thank you, Robert. Much appreciated. So we have an amendment to the motion, a second to the motion. We approve the amendment to the motion. Now, all in favor of HC, Long Term Care Insurance Group Policy? All in favor, say aye.
So, so we have a motion to approve the policy, and then Mr. Brink made a motion to amend it. So it was voted to amend the motion. So, and then it was voted on to approve the motion as amended. So we are, we're, we've covered all of our layers.
We're at the ayes and, and the ayes now. So all in favor, say aye, please.
I would just like to say, I think we need to keep pressure on the legislature and the governor about this, because this is ridiculous. I'm just, I can't believe there's, you didn't even know about it.
So I will also say that I want, I'm gonna keep this in mind next time we have raises proposed for our staff, that we've just given them basically a point six percent raise, didn't we? So, thank you.
And I didn't get the ayes in there, opposed, like sign. None heard their motion carried. Thank you. And that with Gail, that's AWC question for sure. They, they missed this one totally. I was surprised. Okay, moving on to item eight D as a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Axon Enterprises for vehicle and body cams for the West Richland Police Department. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Bajetic for his staff report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. After that last discussion, boy, I almost hate to even talk about this, but here we go. As council may be aware, the use of body and vehicle cameras by law enforcement has been shown to be beneficial documenting law enforcement interaction with the public, both for evidentiary needs and allegations of misconduct. In the past, we have explored the possibility of purchasing or acquiring body cameras or vehicle cameras, but the bottom line, it's been cost prohibitive, not only due to the cost of the equipment, but the, the man-hours needed to invest in fulfilling public disclosure request or evidentiary needs to the courts. On May eighteenth of this year, Governor Inslee signed a series of police reform legislative proposals, which have put us in a position where body and vehicle cameras become a necessity. The primary proposal the governor signed into law is House Bill twelve twenty-three, which requires electronic recordation of all juvenile interrogations and all adult felony interrogations. This is both in the, whether they occur in the field or in a controlled environment, such as a police station. When this was first proposed and going through the process of the legislature, it was pointed out that this is basically a mandate for body cameras. And the legislature was very careful to make, or to craft language as such to avoid body camera mandate language and simply said, well, there's other means that you can make the recording without actually offering any ideas beyond, hey, use your cellphone, which is impractical. Other new laws of legislature proposed and were, which were assigned by Governor Inslee, included three additional use of force legislation, which governs police use of force across the spectrum, which also leaves us a great liability for false claims or violations of these laws. Other laws, such as duty to intervene, House Bill eleven forty, juvenile access to attorneys, direct possession laws, and the felony bar law, also put us in a position where really documenting every single one of our actions by body and vehicle cams became a necessity, not only to show compliance with these laws, but also to protect not only the agency, but the entity, the city of West Richland, from potential liabilities. All these laws become effective. from potential liabilities. All these laws become effective um July twenty twenty-one and uh January twenty twenty-two. Um, I've taken uh, I've had a uh opportunity to present the council a total of three biennial budgets, seventeen and eighteen, nineteen and twenty, and the current one, we find ourselves in twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, and I've uh mentioned at each one of, at the end of each one of those presentations uh what the future may hold, and in every single one of those presentations of council or members, I included unfunded mandates and specifically body cameras. And also uh during this last legislative session, not only during council, but sending out information um as far as uh police reform legislation making its way through uh the session, um what some potentials would be. Um, and again, although uh legislature was careful to avoid man- uh mandate language um in order to comply with the laws, uh body wired vehicle cameras became a necessity. Now, we did uh immediately, uh actually while this was still working its way through the process and in the past have uh uh can uh researched numerous different systems available for law enforcement uh for uh recording equipment, and we have determined that the Axon uh system uh is the best source of this equipment for several reasons. Um, first, Axon is on the state bid to furnish body and vehicle camera equipment and video, video storage management. Um, the Axon system is a proven system, uh most uh notably locally to the Pasco Police Department who's employed now this system since two thousand eighteen with great success. Um, the Axon package would furnish and install body cameras, vehicle cameras, um I T hardware, editing software, um and unlimited cloud storage. And in addition, uh tasers and all associated uh taser equipment and training uh which is replaced two, every two and a half years as the program progresses through its five-year purchase agreement cycle. Um, this would equip sixteen officers with body cameras and sixteen vehicles with uh cameras. Uh, both quiet cameras would be required in order to allow electronic documentation for multiple perspect- perspectives. The vehicle cameras also allows electronic recording of the backseat prisoner transport area for interviews and health and safety during transport. And just to expand on that, uh the backseat of the patrol vehicle a lot, in a lot of cases out in the field, a lot of our interviews or interrogations uh do occur in the backseat of a police car. Um, and a camera is video recording the entire backseat. Um, and if you remember, I believe it was a council session or two uh last, uh I gave a life-saving award to one of our officers who actually had a person basically die in the backseat of his car during transport. Um, a video cam would have been very beneficial, not only for this, uh but also the recording of the incident. Now, a- another uh feature of this, this, this show you how effective it really is. The system is activated a number of different ways. Uh, the, again, remember the officers equipped with a body camera and a vehicle camera. Um, the systems and cameras can be activated manually. Um, when the emergency vehicle lighting is activated, when the vehicle long gun or less lethal uh system is removed from the gun rack in the vehicle, uh when a sidearm is drawn from its holster, and when a taser is drawn uh from its holster, or if another camera uh is activated in close proximity. What that means, if you have a group of officers handling multiple people, what would happen is if my camera turns on either because I drew a weapon or I manually activated because I wanted to make sure something was being recorded, every officer's camera in that immediate vicinity would turn on automatically as well. And you can see the great benefit for something like that, especially uh with multiple uh persons uh interacting. And again, they provide multiple angles. The um. So and a- a- another uh neat part of the system, which is actually one of the uh biggest parts of that, is the unlimited secure uh cloud storage and editing software. Um, again, you put these camera systems in proximity of the download station, which I would be the police department. Um, they immediately would start downloading into this cloud. The editing software is crucial because even though we, we don't know what cost is gonna be associated with processing public disclosure uh requests or evidentiary request from prosecutor's office, um i- it's gonna take time to do that and man-hours. However, with this editing software, uh the uh ability to process these are are probably uh the most efficient on the market, which should save us some staff time and money. Um, and finally, uh with this package, uh we also, uh since Axon is associated with taser, the one and the same, uh the tasers are included with the overall purchase, uh which is an added benefit because the taser in itself is a seventeen hundred dollar piece of equipment. And then when you talk about battery packages, which cost in the hundreds, and cartridges, which are probably about fifty plus dollars a piece, and then training equipment, uh if you use training cartridges and uh protective pads and targeting things and hundreds and hundreds of dollars, um that's all incorporated in a total package uh for this deal. Um, this program is cost-effective, um since it allows agencies to forego the equipment replacement cost. If independently purchased, the cost associated with storage and editing software and the total um uh purchase of the equipment would be enormous. And uh one thing you would not have the option of is getting new equipment uh every two and a half years or even replacing that equipment, because they're, the, uh ladies and gentlemen, make no bones about it, this is expensive stuff. Um, it costs a lot of money. Um, and to have a program where you incorporate into the purchase agreement the rotation of brand-new equipment every two and a half years um to supply unlimited storage, uh editing software capabilities, the the uh I T updates, um the taser equipment, the training equipment. Um, i- i- it's just, there's, there's nobody on the market that has something like that. And fortunately, we have an agency close by that has demonstrated that um Axon delivers exactly what they promise. Uh, the cost of this package for the twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget is a total of one hundred seventy thousand dollar, uh one hundred seventy thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and forty-six cents, which will require a budget amendment being presented by the finance director, Aaron Gwen, immediately following this presentation. The remaining balance of the five-year agreement would be incorporated in the future budgets and at a cost of sixty thousand, fifty-one dollars and forty-six cents per year. If approved, Axon can deliver and install the system by the end of July twenty twenty-one. I think that's optimistic. I I I would think that systems would probably uh fully be enacted and in place uh in August. Um, this would allow the immediate use, training, policy implementation, and incorporation um by January of twenty twenty-two, when the custodial interrogation law takes effect. The immediacy of the state mandates and short period of time to totally implement these new systems and procedures unfortunately require decisive action to comply uh with the current law. Um, so ladies and gentlemen, counsel, uh staff recommends the purchase uh of the package denoted in the Axon proposals for body and vehicle cameras, cloud storage, hardware, software, and installation, taser equipment, and training to comply with state laws and potential liabilities. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy to take any questions.
Thank you, chief. Uh, before we do that, let's ask the audience if there's anyone that'd like to comment on this agenda item this evening. If so, please raise your virtual hand or star nine on your phone to be recognized by the clerk. Stephanie, I see no one. Do you see anyone from the audience?
I do not.
Seeing no one, counsel, may I have a motion, please?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the master services and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprises. Should counsel approve the subsequent budget amendment?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. That counsel, Mr. Smart, your hands up.
Yes, uh. Chief, can you, I I didn't see, how many taser systems do you get with this package?
Mr. Smart, I apologize. I'm in my office and I had a Harley Davidson Revenger engine right when you started talking outside my window, so could I hear that again, please?
I have, and I have a comment regarding that later in the meeting, so, but yeah, um. What, uh, how many taser systems come with this package? I think you said sixteen officers have cameras. Um, is that enough? Uh, does that cover, or is it too many? Uh, do we just need cameras for the number of officers that are on a shift or on call? How, how, how does that all work out? Are those numbers all like exactly what we need, or is that just what a package comes with?
So, um, the camera systems are known and necessitated for a patrol division. Uh, so that would equip all of our patrol officers, including uh the increased staffing that council has added uh for the twenty-one, twenty-two. So the sixteen officers on patrol would um have both uh body cameras and vehicle cameras and tasers. Uh, the administrative division, which includes myself, the captain, and the administrative lieutenant, um would not uh carry body cameras or vehicle cameras. They're traditionally office jobs, uh unmarked vehicles, and don't uh generally engage in police activities. Uh detectives as well, uh both Metro and Earnhouse detectives, uh would not have body cameras.
So can you, can you help, help me out with why, why um we need cameras for all of those on patrol when only a few are on patrol at the time?
So the um vehicle cameras, um they are installed in the vehicle, so obviously each officer has their own car. And you would um have it installed in the vehicle, so the vehicles are, you have to have sixteen. Uh, conceivably, you could go to a shared camera system, but each camera has a ident, ident tag uh that's attached to them, that's gonna be for the individual officer. And that especially crucial when you go into a multiple officer situation uh to where they are activated and the other officers are activated as too, so you can track who's attached to what camera. And that's crucial. Another law that I didn't list on here, and again, I I I can't list all the laws they passed in the, uh under the name of police reform. Another one is about police identity. The police has to be readily, readily identifiable. Um, so yeah, individual officer cameras are fairly important. And then finally, Mr. Smart, um let's say, for example, hogs and dogs are major events, uh where we have officers outside just the normal ones assigned to patrol. Um, yeah, so it it'd be a little bit difficult to navigate.
So, and then does each system come with a a taser package as well? Is that the number?
Yes, uh so eight, um we'll get sixteen tasers as well. Um, and the, the neat thing about this whole system is the tasers um and their holster systems are developed to where they're actually activate the camera.
Yeah.
So if an officer even touches the taser and pulls it out, it activates it. Um, when, we don't have to find, buy brand-new uh pistol holsters. Um, uh they have a system that we can put on our holsters to activate um and monitor uh the weapon being withdrawn from its holster.
And is that also true for the long, long arms?
That's the thing about it. Um, the vehicle camera, um the, the long gun rack, which is a secure racking system. Um, they'll put a sensor on that as well, where if that rack is activated, uh so you can withdraw the long gun, it'll automatically um activate the cameras.
And this price includes uh ins- installation and training of all of these systems?
Yes.
Okay, so I just also want to point out that this is um roughly thirty-four dollars per household on the first year and approximately a dollar per month for household, rough numbers uh from, for out years. Uh, I'd always like to do that calculation just to know how much money we're asking our residents to fork over with each decision we make. Um, so I appreciate that info. It's good presentation, chief. Thank you.
Counselor member, Varan.
Thank you. Thank you very much, chief. Um, I'm wondering, and this is something that I thought of while you were going over your presentation, so I apologize for not getting this question to you sooner. I was wondering, I know that in the past, something that was discussed was the thought that it might help if there were to be some sort of a regional clearinghouse sort of thing that other law enforcement agencies would be able to use so that we wouldn't have to pay as much for just a full-time employee or more than one, they would have to go over all of this video if the courts were to ask for it or a public records request were to have been done. Would this allow for, if there were to be some sort of a uh regional clearinghouse to be used for our video to be um gone through by that group, if that makes sense? Sorry.
Um, I'm trying to follow where you're going with the regional clearinghouse. Um, e- each agency operates its own record division. Uh, in this case, uh we're gonna try to um have our city clerk uh fulfill the public disclosure request for the video processing, um and it requires um editing um, you know, for each request. Um, and I, a- again, on a regional approach, no, you won't see that happen unless you combine all the agencies. Um, and you make a metropolitan police force, then maybe then we could have a regional um effort like this, but as of now, um it's individual agency's responsibility fulfill the request, the I, I, I don't understand. I have never heard anything you've mentioned about a regional approach to something like this.
Oh, sorry. It was something that when we had discussed it at the workshop, I believe it was a while ago uh last year, I know COVID kind of the year that disappeared. But I've also read it again in newspaper articles when they were discussing something similar to this, well, probably exactly. Uh, their police departments having to purchase this equipment and deal with the video that would have to be edited for these purposes. They mentioned the possibility of looking at rather than the cost being just on the individual police departments, having some sort of a group that different police departments, different municipalities, and possibly even counties would be able to hire so that we could have just one group that would understand the law just as much as we do. But that their sole purpose and singular purpose would be editing all of this video as necessary for public records and for uh court requests.
I, I've never heard of something like that before. Um, and I, I, I know we've discussed uh on a regional level um, you know, camera systems for quite some time.
Right.
And I, I've never heard of a regional approach like that.
Okay, I, I.
I'd be interested to see any, any logistics behind something like that. It's the first I've ever heard of it.
Okay, I, I, I think that there was something about it, the Tri-City Herald, and maybe the Richland Police Department was looking at, or maybe it was the sheriffs. But I was just wondering about that. That's all. Thank you very much for doing this research.
And, and I, I would uh offer, uh Ms. Miranda, maybe it's not really to do with body and vehicle cameras that you're speaking of, it's some kind of other regional uh thing that um outside of body and vehicle cameras. Um, but yeah, if you see it again, please point me in the right direction and I'll do some uh additional research.
Sure, thank you. I'll see if I can find it after this.
Thank you.
Counselor Lou?
Um, I got three questions. One is, uh what percent of your total budget is this representing?
Oh, boy, the, you know, my budget in general is just below seven million a year, so I, I think we're pretty good. It's fairly low.
Okay, and what it does represent, almost a one, one officer in the way of salary.
Per year, yes, sir.
Yeah. Uh, the, we, we do have some vehicles that we maintain in reserve. There's, we would just simply not have cameras in them, should we? I mean, your old, your old fleet that's sitting back there, we aren't gonna have any cameras in them.
All right, that's a great question, Mr. Boom. I appreciate that. Um, we do maintain a pull fleet uh for vehicles uh that go down and are in for maintenance. Officers would have to um draw a vehicle from the pull fleet to operate. And you're correct, we would not equip those vehicles with vehicle cameras, but they would still have their body cameras.
Okay, and then um you mentioned that the communication between cameras, if one turns on, the others turns on. Um, so for instance, during hogs and dogs, if another agency is there and they have cameras, will all the cameras that are associated with this system turn on?
That wouldn't be quite a show, wouldn't it? Um, uh, no, sir, I, the, the, the package is inclusive just to the West Richmond Police Department.
Okay.
So even if you have a, a same product with another agency, they wouldn't marry up, no.
All right, well, that was it. And, and I, I might mention that, that, you know, we just approved the Biden uh agreement. Um, you know, it might be something worthwhile to look at possibly I mean, not, not so much the extent that, that uh council member Moran mentioned, but um, you know, there, there's certain skills one gets when editing videos. And it might, it might be appropriate to look at possibly pooling, you know, a, a, an individual to prepare that skill, you know, and uh save, save time. So I mean, that's something I would, I would think that all the agencies might think about as, as an approach.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I would um only.
Not meant, not, not to, not to go through it, but. Not, not meant, not, not to, not to go through it, but a person that could clean up a video if presented type of thing.
So the, the stop from, um, it, it would be great. Once we get the system in place to have a demonstration, because um, the, I, I probably doesn't do it justice to describe what the system can do as far as the editing software. Um, I, I do know that um you can, uh, for example, blur, uh, target a face that you want blurred out and automatically do that during the whole video. Um, you can do it with audio the same way. Um, where if you want either keywords or just one person that's speaking, it can uh edit all that out. And um you don't have to necessarily burn copies, which is a great asset. So once we get done with the editing feature of the software, um whoever makes the request, whether it's the courts or the person, we send them a link uh rather than our actual hard copy, and they can access the edited video and that only um through that link. Um, and Pasco, um, through the years, uh, they said that the new software has improved, you know, so much that their uh disclosure um really, or processing and editing has really been cut more than half. Um, and uh plus initially, we'll probably see a lot of requests, uh just more out of curiosity than anything else. But with the combination of the legislation, which has come somewhat more restrictive on who can request the video and uh the fact that once the novelty of the new system wears off on people, they find out, you know, really ninety-nine percent of police work is pretty dang bored. Um, that, uh, you know, we won't have as many as we will on the onset of this program.
Councilmember Brown?
Chief, maybe you already said this, but um Richland and Kennewick are, you said Pasco was using this, or does it look like they're going to go that way in the sheriff's lap?
Yes. Um, so uh initially, we were going to explore this on a regional level. Um, all the agencies are in the process or one step of the process to obtain body cameras. Uh, because again, it came very clear that although legislature claims this is not a body camera mandate, Waspick and everybody with a head on their shoulders realizes the body camera mandate. Um, so they are all pursuing these options. So far, they're all going with Axon. Um, we attempted to do uh again on a regional approach, and I, I appreciate councils. Um, uh, you know, seeing the benefit of uh regional approaches, because law enforcement, I think, is leading all the entities uh within this region uh at the state as far as regionally working in partnership and getting things uh done more efficiently and quickly. Um, however, Axon's package, we benefit by going to the loan versus an original approach, because the cost uh it's almost like on a, a, a scale where smaller agencies, since it's ourself, we pay less than a larger agency. Um, because they, they charge by how many officers you have. Um, so Kennewick per officer is going to pay more than West Richland. So um that's why after discussions, uh, we went alone on this. And Kennewick and Richland, um, they initially approached the regional, um, you know, purchasing uh route, and it just didn't work out. Um, the price structure didn't change. Um, as a matter of fact, we weren't regionally with them, but it cost us more.
And, and as far as the video, we have to keep that forever, right? Well, I don't have to keep it forever, but at that, the city in this cloud, they have to keep that pretty much forever, correct?
No, we, we don't. Um, the, uh, we have different uh uh retention schedules, uh, is similar to uh paper records, a retention scale, whether it's a, a part of a police report. Obviously, we would have to maintain it for a while. Uh, general video, like let's say an officer uh conducts hundreds of traffic stops. Um, unless those videos are actually requested by the courts or the officer requests it, it'd be saved because he feels like the person's going to contest it because, you know, the person said he's going to contest it. Um, it automatically cycles out after ninety days.
Only ninety days, okay.
Yes. And, and, and another neat thing about this, um, so we're talking about recordings. It has a pre-record feature as well, which is crucial. Um, otherwise, that video is constantly recording. Um, and when you turn it on, it'll lock in the previous thirty seconds, one minute, two minutes, depending on what you program um uh into it of what uh before are you activating it? So if you see something on the road and then you turn on your camera, oh dang, I missed it. It's not, I didn't get it on camera. Well, yeah, you did, because uh it locks in the previous two minutes from when you turned it off. Um, and I, I, when I was working with my former agency, I, I did have vehicle cameras. And it's a security blanket for me. Um, I love cameras. They're evidentiary. You can't beat them. Officer safety. To let somebody know they've been electronic reported does have an impact. Um, but you know, most, most only basically beyond the legislative um requirements. Um, liability, it's really going to save us. Um, like I said, every single one of these laws that legislature passed, I, I don't know if I want to call them poison pills or what, but there's language in every single one of these that makes it easier to sue uh the jurisdiction. And uh these cameras are going to save our bacon uh whenever we get these all false allegations that may come forward. So uh the benefits is far outweigh any, you know, negatives.
Councilmember Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, gee, I have a couple of questions. So so we're saying we're, we're initially going to um test Stephanie. I know she's got so much free time during her, her day. Do we have an idea how much time this is going to, like, for example, what do we get currently for requests for information? Because I'm assuming it'll be the same number. I know you said initially it'll be a little peak, but what do we think this is going to cost per time?
You know, that, that's a big unknown, Mr. Fennel. Um, we could only speculate. Um, and we talked about it, uh, not only here at the police department, but with senior staff for the city, and we just don't know. Um, any figure I get would give you uh would be a pure guess. I can't base it on what Pasco's requirements or, or we uh request amounts were, because you know, we're completely different from Pasco. I don't know if we're going to get more or we're going to get less or none at all. Um, so we talked about it, that staff, uh, not only the uh public disclosure of time spent by the city clerk, uh, but any of the IT needs uh for maintaining the system is unknown right now. Um, and that's going to be explored here really quick. And uh then we're going to have to evaluate it to see if it falls under our worst fears that we do need additional, you know, staffing um for this. Um, you know, uh, I know the, the city, and, and again, I'm getting ahead of the whole game, but in general, uh, the city's had uh IT needs now for quite some time. Uh, is this the time now where we have an extra burden for filling, fulfilling these requests? Um, and other IT needs, uh, is it now the time to pull the trigger on the IT person where they can take the load off of the city clerk to free her up uh for these public disclosure requests? Because let's remember, the city clerk, that's one of her primary duties. Um, so I, I, a long way of showing, I don't know. Um, and that's something that we're definitely looking hard at.
The um I, I know Axon's contracted, I saw Mr. Mayhem was on, um, talks about a train, the trainer program. Um, I don't know, you can, I talked to a couple of officers over at Pasco uh prior to this being a thing, um, when I was over there for some work. Um, do we know how well they say that the training has helped them? Is it, is it valuable? Is it, we, we did the training, but we had to go, I mean, I've done a ton of trainings through my work, and I find it's you pretty much worthless, and I usually have to end up figuring out how to do it while I'm doing the job. Um, do we know how that, how easy the system is to use? I know, so the sit the highlights you said about pointing at a face and blowing it all the way through or keying on certain voices, that, that sounds great as far as having to, I, I can't imagine having to isolate a single face on every single frame. Um, but we know is, I mean, it's just a fairly easy to use or into, into it?
Yeah, and um there are a lot of my friends over there at Pasco, and I can tell you that some of them, if they can operate the system, we're golden. Um, so, uh, and I say that with all the love in the world, uh, for all my Pasco peeps. Um, but in general, no, the train, the trainer actually is a, a really good um system, especially with the editing. Um, it's not a hard system to learn, but it's something that you really need to sit down with an instructor to go through. Um, working of the video equipment, um, yes, uh, if you have one or two key people within, within the agency uh to take that training and they come back and make sure all the other officers are on board, and we usually can accomplish that through a shift brief tra- uh shift briefing training. Um, and again, if we can get it in the cars by August, I really do think we're going to be one hundred percent up to speed by January uh when this law becomes effective. Um, we've already got draft policies in place. Um, and we have them with the union right now being screened, so it can work out any bugs. But the good news is, uh, we didn't have to reinvent the wheel, because there are several policies floating around out there um that uh fit the bill. Uh, so I, 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 the training is beneficial, the program is beneficial. Um, but we have a lot of other people outside this Axon itself, uh, to draw on, uh, to really make this a successful program.
And then, and last question, so only patrol's going to have cameras, body worn cameras? Let's say another genius decides to, to break into JD's diner and you respond. Are we then out of compliance if you respond to that? Because again, it's right across the street.
Um, no, I, 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 I still go out there and do police work.
Okay.
Get a little bit harder every day, but I'm doing it. Uh, no, a- and again, this is only for custodial interrogations. So if I'm questioning somebody or things like that, yeah, I would have to have some kind of um recording. Uh, but generally, I'd just pass it off to an officer. Uh, and also, we're talking about detective, for example. Um, our, our interview rooms at the new police facility will have um a recording uh and audio in the interview rooms. That was part of the package, not the Axon package, but the part of the new police facility. So those are already equipped. Um, so all the rooms inside the facility for interviews already have that equipment headed its way and being installed. Um, so in, in general, if I don't have the appropriate equipment, I just send them off to somebody that does.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, chief, I appreciate very much the thoroughness that you put in uh in the discussion and the questions, the responses to the questions posed by my fellow council members. Um, I think that this is the best move for West Richland. Uh, you're absolutely right that uh this will help uh in the uh successful defense if, if allegations are made against our officers, against their actions. And uh while council member Smart did uh discuss a cost per citizen, I do know that a uh successful lawsuit, which cannot be defended by uh video or audio uh mitigation or evidence that would mitigate officers' actions could cost a lot more than that. So I think that this is a good move for the city. My question is this, I just have one question. Once again, um, it's similar to what I asked Ms. Mathers. Um, you've talked about Pasco's recommendation for uh this company for Axon. Um, what other factors have weighed in in this decision? Um, what other vendors or why didn't you pick some other vendors? Because this is a hefty cost.
Um, you're right, Mr. Brink. Um, the cost is actually uh on the low end of the scale as far as purchasing the equipment. Uh, this is the only um package that we had available where not only you have an automatic replacement program every two and a half years. Um, but the taser as part of the package, which was actually a, a little bit of a bonus, and I think that's why they incorporated. Uh, again, you can add up the cost of a, a taser package, just the tasers alone. If we look at um eighteen hundred dollars um times sixteen, um, right there, you're looking at uh twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and uh you know, and then you have to rotate, rotate those out. Um, you know, probably about every five years, they start going bad. Um, and that's not including the battery replacements, the cartridge replacements, or anything else. So that's added on top of it. Um, and um we did explore uh other companies, um, and none of them have uh the replacement packages, pretty much you buy it and you got it. And then when it gets outdated or um you have to get it, the cloud storage seemed to be a lot more expensive um with other companies. And uh we did get all the names from Pasco on their research that uh that drew them to their conclusion. And yeah, everything pans out to where this is the most cost-effective. Uh, the best system, I think, by far. They have capabilities, a lot of them don't. And um, you know, this overall, i- i- it's the best bang for the buck.
All right. Thank you, chief. Um, I am concerned for the future though, because uh once we start uh creating these uh video and audio recordings and archiving them and so forth. Of course, we, I anticipate we're going to have more public disclosure requests. Of course, evidentiary requests, discovery and so forth that has provided for any court proceedings. So I think that, you know, we, we as council are, are going to be looking at the need for additional staff as well to help support this, because I, I don't think uh our, our city clerk will have the time to do all the work, as I think councilman, uh, council member Fennel pointed out. So it's great, chief. Um, thank you for the presentation. I support this. But I think we're also going to have to consider some additional uh or we're going to encounter some additional costs as we go down the road for staffing. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brick. And I, I'd just like to add that, um, a- again, just to remind council, you know, i- it's a sad day. We've gotten to this point where um, you know, we're being told what monies we have to spend, what our priorities are. Um, and I just want to reinforce council, even though I, I love body cameras, I think they're great. Uh, you're correct. That's why I never brought this up in the budget, trying to incorporate in the budget. We run a tight budget. Um, and you know, it's not whether or not we can afford it, it's unfortunate we have to have it. Um, and um, and another thing, Mr. Brink, uh, to add on to what you said. Um, again, I want to provide council with factual information on what kind of time we're looking at. Uh, it's going to take uh for processing these requests, and hopefully uh within six months, I think we should have some good accurate information for everybody to digest.
Uh, and I agree with you, chief. I think the uh, the unfortunate part is, of course, this is another unfunded mandate from the state. And the thirty-four dollars a month that uh it's costing our residents, unfortunately, it's only going to go in one direction, and that's all. So thank you again, chief.
Councilmember Smart?
Yeah, uh, chief, just one, a couple of quick technical questions on this equipment. I'm curious about it, uh, do the cameras indicate to the officers uh when they're on? So you said they're automatically turned on. Do they beep or do they flash or something? How, how does an officer know his camera is activated?
It, it's a light.
It's a light?
Yeah, there'll be a light on. And uh we have really good policies in place, um, where by some chance um officers uh have the camera on when they don't necessarily are, are aware of it. Um, that, you know, that, that we, we have policies to govern that. And um not to say that it happens, but um officers, you know, that may automatic or accidentally draw their taser out and put it back in next to another officer to activate his camera unknowingly. Um, you know, things happen. Um, so uh we have policies in place to um make sure that any inappropriate or um and an unintentional video is processed accordingly.
Yeah, right. And so uh, and so I presume there's some security agreement with this company. It's probably bulletproof. I can't imagine it wouldn't be. Um, I won't even ask the question, but I'm going to bring it up just so people know I've considered it. Unless there's uh something you have to say about that. And then a- also, you mentioned all these times that it automatically turns on. You know, so this requirement from state law is for, um, what did you say, interrogation purposes or, or ti- times when there's questions being asked? And not necessarily just situational environments, like when the officer gets out of his car, his or her car. Um, is it uh, there's no auto on at that point? Is that correct?
That is correct. If, if he's not taking any action, otherwise he hasn't activated his emergency overheads by pulling somebody over.
Okay.
Um, he hasn't drawn a weapon or he hasn't manually turned it on. Yeah, it doesn't come on.
Okay, but the overheads turn it on?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that would.
And it governs custodial interrogations. Um, otherwise, whenever you're questioning somebody. Now, the, the word, the key word custodial is again where they do a wrench into the works. Uh, we know what custody means. Police are experts on when you're in custody, when you're detained, you're not free to leave.
Right.
Uh, the legislature wrote the law, again, not with police in mind, uh, but the suspect in mind. And it's whether the suspect believes they're being detained. Um, uh, whether or not it should be recorded or not, not the, a legal definition of detention, what they feel. And I can guarantee you, every suspect that goes to court to try to get statements thrown out is going to feel that uh say that he was not free, he didn't feel he was free to leave. And that uh inherently makes it a custodial interrogation anytime he's questioned.
So really, we'll be recording more often than not?
Further likely, yes.
Um, and so then the last question is, uh, this annual cost, the roughly sixty thousand in the out years, is that locked in? Is there a guarantee for five years or ten or twenty, or is that subject to change?
No, it, it's a five-year agreement that we're entering into.
Okay. And then, and then, of course, no indication, what would happen if? And then, uh, and then, of course, no indication, what would happen after five years? No percentage increase or anything like that?
No, um, we, we don't know that, I mean, obviously, we can anticipate, uh, increasing cost at the end of this five-year agreement. Uh, but five years is actually very reasonable, it's, it's long enough where we get a quote-unquote co- some of the cost savings. Um, but it's short enough to where, you know, hopefully it won't go up too much, next time we have to renew it.
Okay, I really appreciate your presentation, Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you, Council, good conversation, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, thank you, Chief. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to eight E is an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two biennial budget, that'll bring Aaron to the floor for our staff report.
So unfortunately, Aaron's internet connection was lost, so she. She exited the meeting because she does not have internet at the moment. Um, so I can read your staff report if you'd like, or, um, I'm not sure how you would like to proceed.
Yes, if you would please, that would be fine, and, uh, hopefully she'll rejoin us by the time we get into, uh, the conversation. I didn't even see her gone there.
Okay, so it does look like the, uh, ordinance seventeen twenty-one is amending the twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget. Um, so the adjustments include, uh, to the general fund. On May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, Governor Inslee signed several legislative proposals into law. Which will require interrogations by police officers in the field to be electronically recorded. House Bill twelve thirty-three did not state body cameras were a required solution, however, it is the most practical and efficient solution for the mandate. The attached budget amendment would increase appropriations in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. To purchase body and vehicle camera equipment as well as video storage. The package also includes new tasers, associated training, and a two-and-a-half-year replacement program. The city would not have. Needed to replace tasers this biennium, but it would be a cost savings in future budget cycles. The contract does extend beyond the current biennium and will require approximately sixty thousand, fifty-two dollars per year for an additional three years beyond year twenty twenty-two. Transfer to, also includes a transfer to the street fund one-on-one in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Um, so the city currently owns four dump trucks, uh. Uh, age nineteen eighty-six, nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-seven, and two thousand, which are equipped with snow removal equipment. The city last purchased a dump truck in two thousand and thirteen. During the truck's annual DOT inspection last November, it was discovered that one of the trucks had a cracked frame. The truck was repaired for the last winter season but will not pass another inspection. Staff recommends replacing the truck to maintain the current number of dump trucks in the fleet for future winter seasons. In addition to a new dump truck, there is, and there is additional snow ice removal. Equipment that should be replaced, this includes a de-icer tank, new sanders, and plows. This budget amendment includes an increase in appropriations in the amount of forty thousand dollars for replacement snow and ice equipment. And then for Fund four four one, the Water Sister Development Fund. On March second, twenty twenty-one, an application was submitted to Benton County to use rural county capital funds, RCCF. For improvements to water infrastructure along SR two twenty-four. The city's application was approved for the project, the total cost of the water improvements is estimated to be one million, five hundred eighty-three thousand. Of which the RCCF would cover the one million, three hundred eighteen thousand. A total of thirty thousand is already included in the current salaries and benefits budget. The remaining two hundred and thirty-five thousand will come from fund balance. And finally, for Fund four forty-two Sewer System Development Fund. The SR two twenty-four improvements also includes a total of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand for the sewer portion of the project. A total of thirty thousand is already included in the current salaries and benefits budget. The remaining two hundred and forty-nine thousand would, will come from fund balance. This budget amendment also reduces the budget needed for sewer improvements associated with Paradise Way Phase Four project. By a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. So it is staff's recommendation to pass the ordinance.
Okay, with that, is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this, an item on the agenda this evening? If so, please raise your virtual hand or star nine on your cell phone. We recognize. Stephanie, I do not see anyone from the public, do you?
I do not, but I do see Erin S. Salina.
Yes. I, I was on the phone with her, she was cruising down Belmont on her hands-free device.
That is correct.
Okay.
My, uh, car.
Okay, so, uh, no one from the audience, Council, may I have a motion, please?
I moved to pass ordinance seventeen twenty-one amending the City of West Richland, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennium budget.
Okay. Motion, a second, Council questions of, uh, staff. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you, yes, uh. I just have a quick question, so. This is including changes more than just. What's required to purchase the equipment for the cameras and tasers and whatnot, correct?
That is correct, there is four items in this that are included, well, really three, one is taken away. Um, but one was the body cameras, one is for the street fund for, uh, snow equipment, snow and ice equipment. And then the other one actually is associated with, uh, consent agenda item six D. Which is the RCCF funds, uh, for the, uh. Water system development, um, improvements. And then it also included a small portion for the sewer system for the same, uh, SSR. SR two-two-four project.
Okay, and the items, of course, not including the items for the police department, not. All of them are for emergency items, correct? They aren't things that we just found out about right this very second that we need right now, I'm.
Well, I would say.
Question, I promise.
That's okay, I would say the snow equipment to some degree is, um, it was after budget. Um, it was because it was back in November, they go through a DOT inspection, if you remember, we passed the original budget in November. Um, and then the. Um, other items are from the consent agenda and they're associated with the project that is now being brought forward, so. Is it emergency, I mean, it's up to you to call, but it is part of the project.
Yeah, on the, on the dump truck, the DOT inspection passed, but they said, don't bring it back, you will not pass the next year's inspection, so that truck is basically worthless to us. To ma- maintain our fleet level of services to necessity.
Fair enough, uh, the, the only reason that I bring this up. Is because this is a change to our budget, and I know that we're very concerned about amendments to the budget. And I would just like to note that this is one of many amendments that we are making to the budget. Which we were concerned about when we were discussing. The, uh, form of government change, so I just wanted to mention that.
It is, uh, so in a standard year, like in a standard budget cycle, we go through, I mean, is. Um, I just did the annual financial report, and you go through several, uh, items. Every budget cycle, um, a budget's an estimate, but, uh, everything on here is, uh, urgent and has come up.
Councilmember Bloom.
Um, yeah, my question is for Roscoe, and you can correct me if I'm totally out of sync. But we had talked about having a replacement plan for major equipment. And we, we are not funding that type of. Uh, you know, rainy day fund for, for, you know, the snow removal equipment.
Uh, no, you've got replacement in the water and sewer utility for the major equipment, but as far as. Uh, dump trucks in the street fund, no, we're not, we're not there.
But we put them in for, say, street sweeper, right?
Street sweepers out of your stormwater utility, uh, back to trucks are out of the water, or, excuse me, sewer. So we haven't got to the point where we've created a fleet for those trucks or anything in the street fund. Um, and we're not buying, uh, brand-new three-hundred-thousand-dollar dump trucks, we're buying. Dump trucks that are on state surplus for. Less than twenty thousand, and then going through and fixing them up for the two, two weeks a year I need them to plow snow.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
I guess, um, well, one thing, just in money-wise, it looks like, uh, the legislature. Just tacked on a hundred and eighty-five, two hundred and eighty dollars for this budget amendment, um. And that's just the dollar amount, not staff amount, so I, you know, I know AWC doesn't represent the cities, but I cannot stress enough. That we need to have some of these things in front of us during legislative times and city council. Um, you know, we could all get, yeah, and let the citizens know, so they can be notified. Um, this is just huge on our budget, and this is just the top of the iceberg. Um, and, uh, one thing I did want to mention to Roscoe is, I, I talked to you about that Covington on the. That they had, uh, inventory, they had inventory, it didn't matter what it was, they had inventory of their lights, took them a long time, but they had inventories. So that, this stuff just doesn't come up, I mean, it's on their inventory, not necessarily replacement. But they know what to expect, but it's not necessarily a budget amendment. Um, because I know we did the SUVs last year, and I, and I asked, and you said, well, you had so many, you weren't sure how many you had. We really need it, your, your, your department is getting so huge that you're really going to start needing to have some kind of inventory.
We, we have an inventory of all of the public works department, I'm not sure what you're referring to, Councilmember Brown.
What we, what we would anticipate breaking down.
What I can anticipate is, I got four dump trucks that are. Have a hundred to a hundred and eighty thousand miles on them, and they will break down. If we want to spend three hundred thousand dollars, then they will last, but I can't tell you how long they're going to last. This is why the DOT surplus them. But they've worked well for our budget and our needs at the city for the last twenty-plus years, so. If we want to start buying new dump trucks, new plows, then. You know, we can, we can look at that too, but, um, I can't tell you how long they're going to last, we, we go through, we maintain them. We go through and have DOT inspections for the winter hits. And they run hard, and they run twenty-four seven when we have snow events and things break, and unfortunately, this dump truck. Isn't going to pass inspection again, and actually, we didn't use it this winter, even though it passed. I didn't feel comfortable putting our employees in a vehicle that they said, this is the last time it's going to pass, so, um. You know, if, if we don't feel comfortable passing the budget amendment, we will provide the level of service we can, the best to our ability with the three plows we have. I mean, that's what's before you as a council member.
Councilmember Smart.
Yeah, Council, I would just like to, uh. Mention that, you know, we, these, these four items, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned with budget amendments as well. But in defense of staff and our own process, I just want to point out that we had a very good discussion on the first one. My comments on it would be that elections matter. So if people don't want to have mandates from the governor's office, they should think about that. The, uh, street funds, the dump truck, I don't think, like Mike Roscoe just said. You know, I don't, I don't necessarily know that we want to have a, a, a full price equipment replacement program. Uh, maybe a little bit of rainy day fund is fine, fund is fine, but I think we can absorb a dump truck failing every couple of years, if it's a forty thousand dollar replacement. Um, the Water System Development Fund. And the sewer system, we have had briefs on that, I expected this amendment, this is something that we've talked about with the SR two twenty-four. Work that, um, that we, uh, agreed to proceed with, so. I actually don't find any of this surprising, and although I'm concerned about the costs. Um, none of these seem like costs that we can avoid, so I will support this motion, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, break, sir.
I will just follow, uh, Councilmember Smart's statements, I agree, I don't see any real surprises here. Uh, everything here is, uh, needed for the city, so I too support this amendment.
Very good. Okay, with that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, please. Motion carried unanimously, but thank you. Uh, we have no one to finish the business this evening or new business, so this is the opportune time for. Citizen public comment, our second one on the agenda, if you'd like to provide comments to council, please raise your virtual hand or star nine, and. Stephanie will recognize you. Stephanie, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Nor do I, so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, staff and council announcements, reports and comments. Uh, staff, if there's any staff members that have anything to add this evening, uh, just raise your hand and I'll call on you. Stephanie, I don't see any staffers. Okay, moving on to council comments, uh, I see Councilmember Bloom's up.
Yes, um. Tomorrow, I will be wearing my Benton Franklin Transit hat. At the, um, joint meeting of the Franklin and Benton County Commissioners. It appears that, uh, Commissioner Pex. Um, approach that he came to me over ten years ago. To try and reduce the sales tax that, that transit collects. Um, has infected all of the Franklin County Commissioners. And what they are proposing is a advisory. Ballot issued to go forward to voters, which would say, we think you should. Uh, reduce the Benton Franklin Transit, uh, tax from point six cents to. Well, maybe point five, maybe whatever. Um, the reality comes down to is. They have the authority to implement the point one percent. Sales tax for the mental health facility without a vote of the people, they're just looking for political cover. Um, and say they're trading it off. Uh, the advisory ballot probably has no. No substance, it's not mandatory, it would just be. Uh, people would say, yeah, well, cut my taxes, of course. Um, but that would represent almost a twenty percent cut. In transit's ability to, to do their. Their action, it would bring us back to the point. When they got on the transit board in two thousand and ten. Transit was broke, I mean, they were down to less than one million dollars in ready cash period. Which, when you consider a budget of twenty-two, twenty-five million dollars. Having that little amount of cash on hand is very. Restrictive, and that comes back to the old, uh, motor tab initiative back in two thousand, that, uh. Basically gutted transit of half its funding for two years. I think transit's on the verge of being a, a significant benefit to our community, it's a necessity for a large. Large part of our constituents. And, uh, we'll see how it goes tomorrow, but, uh, just. Just to be aware, it will be, watch for the film at eleven. Because it will be an interesting discussion tomorrow.
Thank you. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you very much. On the twenty-first, we had a meeting of the Benton Franklin. Economic Development District and also the Benton Franklin Council of Government. Unfortunately, we were not able to get enough members of the Benton Franklin Economic Development District to show up, so we were not able to vote on anything. Uh, but we did discuss a few things, um, mainly, we discussed, uh, different. Congressionally-directed spending, uh, and they did mention that West Richland was be able, was definitely able to get in on that, so kudos definitely to Roscoe and the team for getting in on those. Uh, getting those submitted in as quickly as possible. And, uh, we didn't have any executive session because we didn't have quorum, and then for the Benton Franklin Council of Government, we barely eked through. With a quorum, and we discussed the fact that we now have a two-year. Uh, let me get the letters right, what they mean. Uh, Unified Planning Work Program, so it used to be one year, now we have them every two years. So that is a change, uh, we extended our travel demand model service contract out. So that is a change, uh, we extended our travel demand model service contract out. We approved a correction to some minutes, and we adopted to surplus some real property. And then we discussed the broadband grant opportunity. There is a national grant going, I believe, until May fourteenth, already ended. But there's also another one that is going until the end of August for grant application for the broadband grant opportunity. And they were wanting to have a meeting to explore the interest with local municipalities and organizations. If there is interest in the broadband for maybe a regional thing, so that I would be interested to know if we've attended any of those yet, if we're interested in attending. Because I think that that would be something useful for our area. And I also wanted to, once again, mention a little bit about the hybrid meetings that hopefully we'll be able to get to eventually, I know that that's some technology that we currently don't have. It would be very useful to have, I think it would be beneficial to all of the people of West Richland, so that if they were not able to attend the in-person meetings, they would still be able to view them and participate remotely. Were there to be any sort of childcare issues or any reason for whatever reason, that they wouldn't be able to leave their house and come to council meeting minute, or council minutes, council meetings, apologies. So hopefully, we are looking at that. And other than that, I want to also thank, uh, Eric for pointing out in the candidate pamphlet that there are rules specifically for our signs. So I'm looking forward to seeing all of the wonderful signs that everybody's going to put out there and hoping that everybody remembers to look through all those regulations that we have regarding signage in West Richland. And that's all I got, thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Um, I went to a, a webinar, I thought they had called it all Zoom now, but this was a webinar on, uh, some code enforcement. There was representatives from all the states, what they talked about, and, and I'm, Eric might be able to, um, know more. I didn't get all the legal step out of it, but it's, uh, a list of vacant properties, particularly in established, um, neighborhoods that apparently has been legal for a very long time, that, um, you have a list, they actually pay a fee versus, um, because they're, they're speculating on the property, they're speculating, they're just setting it, and we see it almost all the way down Bangyson, um, that they're setting on it. And so this is one thing, i- it goes with your code enforcement. But it would be a toolbox for, for some of this property that they've just let set. Um, it, it has a lot of interesting stuff about code enforcement, and I was going to send it along to you, chief, um, because Marissa could, they have, um, educational credits for this, I don't know if she needs that, but she wants them, they, they're kind of interesting. That's it.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Smart.
Uh, yes, council, Mr. Mayor, thank you, um, I had a couple of items I wanted to mention. First, just a technical issue with these meetings is the, is the control for muting ourselves and then un-muting ourselves. Um, you know, when we're in council chambers, we have the ability to mute ourselves if there's a cough or something like that. I tried that with this last time we met and got muted and never was able to get back on. So I would like to ask that we implement the, the responsibility for each of us to, um, mute and unmute ourselves throughout the meeting unless, you know, there's a presentation happening or some other reason. But just to the standard course, I think we ought to be able to mute, not mute. That way, if the dog starts barking or the phone starts ringing or something like that, I can mute me myself and then, and then get back on without waving my arms around, so that's just a thought, I don't know if we can do that or not, I appreciate Stephanie's mute control. I don't want to take that away entirely, but I, I just don't know if it's technically feasible if we can mute and unmute ourselves without her having to check each time, so. Hopefully, we can look into that. Park improvements, I had the pro, uh, pleasure of spending the afternoon at Flat Top Park on Memorial Day. My family reserved the, the gazebo, and it was, uh, really nice. I had some comments from my family and extended family, uh, concerning parks, and, uh, one of the points that came up was that, uh, some of the, some of our family has some very small children, and, um, it was brought up that, like, only two swings evidently in West Richland, I don't know if that's true or not, but, um, the point was well-taken, that, uh, you know, we just spent, um, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on, on police cameras and untold numbers of dollars after that, and, uh, you know, forty thousand on a dump truck and so forth. I just wanted to bring this opportunity as the, to, to plug the idea of getting the park plan going and, um, uh, that, that, hopefully, we can, um, allocate a little bit of money to some upgraded, uh, park, uh, entertainment, uh, facilities for youngsters in this town and, and the more that are hopefully coming with all the new homes that we're building. And then, uh, just to reiterate the, that maybe that trail completion, um, as it extends from, uh, that project number six on the TIP, and maybe getting that to trans, to, to go all the way back through Flat Top and, and up the hill, section six, and through the trail circuit. Um, really something I'd like to see happen. I, uh, I also wanted to mention that, um, since we seem to be continuing with this virtual environment, I noted in the past that, um, each council member was asked to, um, uh, lead the Pledge of Allegiance. If we're gonna keep doing this virtually, I'd like to, uh, volunteer to do that again. Um, I think that everybody ought to have the chance to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, I think I'm a new mayor, but trying to make it as normal as possible. I think that would be a good, good forum. And then, uh, last, I just want to, uh, say that I enjoyed the memorial celebration at Sunset, uh, over at Enn's on, uh, uh, the bypass there. I noted that, uh, it was, was brought up that a lot of the, uh, a lot of the folks that we are memorializing, um, fought in World War Two, uh, three of Vietnam, and other wars that, uh, that, that Americans have lost their lives to in the fight against, uh, totalitarianism and socialism. And I just want to note that that's a, a somber reminder to us to, uh, elect our people, uh, carefully. To look at their backgrounds and look at what they believe, like some of the mandates we've just experienced tonight, are, are taking a vector towards totalitarianism. We're not, we're not Soviet Union yet, but those kinds of mandates are, are perfect form for socialist governments that, um, I don't think most of us want to live under, so. Uh, just want to point that out to ourselves and to our community, and, uh, and, and the elections that are coming up are important. Hope that everybody participates, and, uh, I too am glad for the signed ordinance and declarations on that, so. Thank you very much, I thought I'd have to talk.
Thank you, councilman Smart, yeah, I, I, I can't, uh, I can't agree with you anymore on the parks deal. COVID has really put a hit on our, on our park plan update, and, you know, I still want to remind everybody that we've got over one point three million sitting for the golf course sale, uh, ready for, uh, a, a park plan that has some financial constraints to it other than just a nice plan in a book with no, no monetary backing. So, uh, yeah, we, uh, we, we have the conversation with Eric, and we need the public involvement, we need to have them in, in, in-house and, and have, uh, you know, have the one-on-ones. It is sad that we can't get to that point right now, it's frustrating for everybody, but, uh, believe me, it's not a forgotten item, and we'll, we'll do what we can to make it happen as soon as we can. And that falls, falls into the category too, of, as, as councilmember Moran had mentioned, as I mentioned the previous meeting, that is an, an, an intent of mine to ball, be also, uh, work through, uh, being able to put together a virtual, uh, program with our, uh, with our federal money that we've got coming, so, uh, and, and again, as I said last week, it is in the, in the, in the works and a priority of mine. Thank you, John, much appreciated, councilmember Moran.
Yes, sorry, uh, something that councilmember Brown had mentioned reminded me of a conversation I had this afternoon with, uh, a person that lives in West Richland, and it was about animal control specifically relating to cats. I know that we do great work with our animal control, with our dogs, and I know that we don't have anything in particular that we have with the animal shelter over in Pasco for cats, but we do have, uh, Marissa, the officer, is able to contact a lot of different groups that work with cat rescues, but I'm wondering, something just for thought, and maybe we could talk a little bit further later, but I just wanted to mention it because it was a conversation I had about maybe two hours at most before the meeting about the possibility of getting cats included in part of our contract, if we're going to be discussing the contract anytime in the near, at all future, with animal control. And I wanted to thank, uh, councilmember Smart for bringing up Memorial Day, and it was was a fantastic event at Sunset Park. Our World War Two veterans, the original anti-fascists, the original Antifa, so I just want to thank all of those that have given their life for this country, whether that was in battle or whether that was an internal battle that you had due to your serving, your service that you gave to the country. So, thank you very much.
And as a follow-up in regards to animals and the cats, that, that facility does not accept felines, so we have no source in regards to assistance with that, but Marissa has avenues. If individuals like to contact her and have conversations, she can do what she can to try to put them in touch with the right people, as we have in the past, and we'll continue to do so. All right, very good, council, this has, uh, been a good meeting, thank you for your time. Uh, so with that, we will go ahead and adjourn council meeting at eight nineteen this evening, thank you.